To order, it was properly posted on August 28th. Our prayer and pledge will be led by Mark Cycle from the Treasurers Office.
Almighty and eternal God, we come to you today realizing that we can do nothing, we are powerless to all the forces, be it of nature or of sin, but only through you, oh God, that is our strength and our mercy and our grace that we are restored. So we offer today all those that are suffering, all those that are in need, all those that cry out for your help are answered with a response to those of us that are charged to serve our fellow men as you commanded us to love God and to love our neighbors. Give us the strength to respond, protect those that are in harm's way, protect those and bless those that give and risk their lives to help those in need, and may your grace and mercy be with all of us. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 23rd?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Items five through thirteen are consent docket items and once again reflects numerous items from the sheriff being surplus, which again, John, is just more of the response to the audit, correct? Questions of the consent docket?
No, I don't have any questions. I will comment. You know, we've got, I don't know how many pages here of items that have been surplus just one, one after the other, and law still allows or provides that we have to print all of those in our minutes in the paper. I know we've tried to deal with that in the past, but it's a shame that we're gonna have to, the public has to pay to print all of these items that are being surplus. That being said, move the consent docket.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Our awards, Ms. Gaston.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. The first item is bid number 11801594 for single or dual purpose K9. Invitations to bid were sent, but only one bid was received. But based on evaluation of that bid and recommendation from the end users and comparisons to the last bid, which was held in 2011, I'm recommending awards of Onlicky Kennels.
Move the item.
The next item is bid number CW17033 for medical supplies. Invitations to bid were sent and eight bids were received. And based upon evaluation of those bids and input from end users, I'm recommending award to Ever Ready First Aid, Tronix International, Redwood Toxicology Lab, Premier Scientific, School Health Corporation, NAO Global Health, Emergency Medical Products, and Integral Packaging as the lowest for line item.
Move the item.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. District One, your first tee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As usual, every year about this time, we have a fundraiser to benefit the first tee program. That is our Oklahoma City Youth and Education Program. We're using golf as the hook, and Stacy has been so good in the last three years of helping us with that. We'll just let him talk about it a little bit.
Okay. The most important thing is the kids get the core values that they learn. Golf is just a medium through which they do it. Quella hosts a tournament for us at Twin Hills Country Club. It'll be October 17th at 1:30 for all those of you that would like to play, and those that you're not, are not playing can certainly donate. Very good.
Thank you so much, Stacy. I encourage everybody to come out and play. If you can't play, you're like me, but you'll try anyway, so please come out, and if you can't, just come watch us and donate. Thank you very much. I move this item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
And then, Annually, as she just said, we have our Choctaw Bi-Crun, and we got Jeannie here. You'd like to say something about it?
Yeah, I got an email last night concerning two different spots, and that when we drove the route 164th, Northeast 164th by Dobbs and Harrah Road, there was a road closed sign that was off in the ditch when we drove it, and I could tell they had been doing some work. Well, apparently, that sign is still there, and they were going around marking the road, and they didn't know if that was gonna be, you know, what was gonna be, it's a week from Saturday.
It'll be already by then.
Okay. And then, you know, they've got four different routes, and I missed that one of them went down Luther Road from 164th and something about southbound Luther from 164th to 150th. We didn't ride on that, so I don't know what their concern was on that.
Okay, I'll check it out.
Yeah, we have another group that's coming in to help, thank goodness, because it was just a lady, one lady and me, and she's moving, so they hooked it up with Oktoberfest, and we have great hopes for it to be growing then.
Sure. Well, I appreciate you putting it together, and if there's no questions, I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and we'll wish you well, and I'll get these items looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. And then we have an amendment to the engineering agreement on the portion of 108 and also Memorial Road for the replacement of the box culverts, and I'll move that item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
18 is the proposal from the U.S. Air Force requesting the county to abandon a portion of the section line statutory right-of-way at Midwest Boulevard north of Southeast 74th Street. This is a property located in the jurisdiction of the city of Oklahoma City and has been declared closed by an ordinance, and we can choose to accept or deny this.
Just accept.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion?
We need one additional. If you do accept this, we'll need to have a hearing date established of October 18th, a public hearing.
If that's the case, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll work on getting that set.
I think you need to go ahead and vote on that date so that we can put a publication out.
Is there a motion to set October 18th as the hearing date for this closure?
Move the item.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else we need to do with that, counsel? Is that good? Okay. County Clerk has an item to discuss about a website domain, and I think Mr. Hooton's gonna speak to this.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is just, we had spoken about this over the last several months, about OKCC.online. It's the voice-activated search domain that where people could go on their phone, and they can actually speak into their phone and get out whatever information they want as far as their Platts documents or whatever. They can see them unofficially, and then if they would choose to purchase them, they of course would be charged a fee, and our office would deliver them to them automatically within 24 hours. We've done a lot of work with this, and it's, with your, in essence, we're giving it, gifting it to you all, and then we'll have a formal presentation next week as far as to kind of show everything about it.
Any questions?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Is this absolutely necessary? Is this something that we really need to do? And with your gift in it to us, do we have to pay you the $50?
Well, no, the $50.17 is for the annual renewal of the domain, and that's something that it, that's just how much it costs to have that domain name. The thinking in this is that our domain right now is oklahmacounty.org, and if you're talking on a phone or if you're trying to text something, most people are not going to type in that many characters, but typing in OKCC.online and especially if it has a catchy jingle and everything, everyone can remember that, and in essence, it would become the kind of one-stop where people could just say that line, and then there, it would go straight to a domain that would be linked to all of our other domains. So it's a definite convenience, and it's a marketing tooling convenience.
Do we need a contract with GoDaddy?
No, I don't believe so.
This is just to accept the donation right now.
Your mic's not on.
This is just to accept the donation. Right now, Mr. Hooton, as a private individual, not in his capacity as county clerk, holds the title to this domain. What he is asking is if this board would accept it as a donation. Now, when the domain needs to be renewed at some future point in time at the rate of the $50 that he's stated, then there would probably be a contract at that point in time, but this is just to accept the donation of the domain.
Okay.
The only question I have is whether or not, this is, I kinda have the same question, is it necessary? Did the IT, did you check with any of the IT folks about?
They've worked with us on all of it, and in idea, the, I think everybody agrees, I won't speak for anyone in particular, but everyone agrees that it's a much easier, quicker access to county records is the main reason for it all.
Well, I tried it this morning, and all I get is Oklahoma City because it's OKC, you know?
Right. OKCC.online doesn't go live until we, next week is actually when we would actually do something with it. So there's, nothing has been done up to now as far as, we haven't, haven't done anything with it. It's not live as, right now, that's what I've said, we'll do, if you all will accept it, it's a gift from me personally, we'll do a presentation next week to tell you kind of all about it and the neat parts. And in essence, it's not costing you all anything. I incurred the cost for it, and it's, the cost in the future is only the $50.
I sure wanna see you be able to do, you know, your goal. I'm sure we'd like to see the IT people say, yeah, we need this, and I'd like to see it work, you know? And I, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it is additional cost to the county to use that particular website address, I guess, but my understanding is you could do this on your current website address.
Right. And if, again, the whole thing is convenience and marketability as far as to try to get a bunch of, in essence, trying to push a million people to use a domain, it's a lot harder to sell OKLAHOMACOONTY.org than it is OKCC.online. That's, in essence, the whole thing, and correct?
Well, we also have OK County, which is just a lot shorter. You don't have to write the name.
Right. You all are allowed to do as many domains as you would, you can do whatever you'd like to. This one was one, the only reason for the OKCC was Oklahoma County Clerk. It was just a one that was available, and I thought it was very, very appropriate for Oklahoma County Clerk. And again, this was initially set up as a search engine for Platts and titles and deeds, which that's what our office does, is we have hundreds of people daily looking at that, and we would hope to have thousands of people daily looking at it and also researching it. And we think that the genealogy aspect of it is also a big thing that hasn't been explored, but that would also push traffic to that website. And in essence, the website would be a cash cow for the county, and that's what it's intended to do, is that we're hosting it here, so it's not gonna cost the county anything, and that is, and hopefully, as I told you all earlier, because of the voice activation situation, there's lots of aspects about it that I think make it very marketable.
How would you market it?
Another thing I'd like to touch base on is this would also be cutting out a portion of our next agenda item, around approximately $100,000 a year is what we're paying for, a portion of what we use this for, something that's called Rome right now. So in essence, this is going to replace that, be hosted onsite, and save the county money.
See, I don't understand any of that, so.
Yeah, that's why I tried to stay out of those acronyms and Rome and all that, 'cause it gets really advanced quickly, and that's why, if you all would be kind enough to accept it, next week I'll do a, we have a formal presentation that will, with all the bells and whistles, and show you everything if you, I mean.
Well, we have people that are knowledgeable in this area, obviously, and I'd sure like to see the IT committee say, this is something we need.
Okay.
So, Mr. Vaughn, would you be thinking about maybe postponing this until we have some idea from IT?
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
I'm here speaking on behalf of IT, so if y'all have any questions, I can answer any technical questions that you may have about this. This is a, this is a search engine that's replacing a web application that we're already paying for, which we use Granicus for, the company to do this, which we're trying to cut them out, do this onsite, save money, and host that application instead of them doing it.
I could appreciate that.
You want a formal thing from MIS?
From the IT committee, right.
Okay.
Yeah. That's more than one individual.
Sure, and I'll get you, I'll get that for next week.
And you will be working with the IT, excuse me, and you will be working with the IT committee?
I can. I can be with that committee if needed.
It probably will be very helpful, because we're gonna have to depend on your mind, you know, on whether we should or should not.
That would be great if you could get a meeting, you know, in time for next week.
Sure, we'd be happy to.
Perhaps do a demonstration. Can you do a demonstration without this approval today?
Yes, next week we'll do the, we'll do the demonstration with or without approval.
But to accept this, I mean, there's no cost to just accept it. If we didn't like it, then next year we just wouldn't renew the contract. I don't know if there's any harm in just taking it today, just to have it.
I don't know. I'd like somebody in IT to tell me.
I mean, as far as liability goes, I don't think you all have any liability. The domain is paid for until December of next year. There's no other cost involved in it, so I mean.
Well, if we were to do that, would this be on a different website than the county website?
It would be, it's a different website, but they'd all be linked. And in essence, this is in that, in the beginning, when we talked about a central one-stop, this would be my goal of trying to get that one-stop place where people can just access, and then they can go anywhere on, they want to.
And I get that, but I'd like for that to be your website.
Right. Well, OKCC.online, it will be, but not in the beginning. We're not gonna replace everything out there right now. We want to, want to bring this in, have this up and working properly, and see its marketability without us incurring any cost to it, and then phase it in over a period of time to let the public access it and utilize it, and I think that's what the plan is. This isn't something that was thought of quickly. This is a very extravagant plan that probably 500 hours have been involved in this, in getting this up and running, and it, again, there will be a huge cost savings, and also it'll be a cost productive asset to the county.
I recall you were talking about that for a long time. I know this is something we're working on, so.
Right. So again, next week we'll be glad to do the presentation, and you all can handle it however you wish.
Madam DA, can they work on a domain that not belongs to the county? Like to do this presentation if it's on, posted on that site?
Well, I don't know what that would actually entail, so it's kind of hard for me to answer on the spot like this. I don't know. I would need more information and time to look at that.
Okay.
Well, I suggest it would be for all week.
Oh, okay. That's the motion?
It is.
Okay. All right. It's been a motion and second for deferral for one week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And item 20, I believe we're, we strike item 20, 'cause they're still working on contracts.
Move the item. Strike the item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Emergency Management has a memorandum of understanding between Oklahoma City for the use of what we commonly refer to as the bunker at 4600 North Martin Luther King. It's a routine renewal.
Move the item.
Well, for me, just a quick question, David. I'm sorry to get you up, but my understanding was we were leaving that location, and we've provided space in the Kraus area to kind of absorb your work there.
The Kraus space we currently utilize is in the shop building, which is the central facility. We have vehicles stored there. I definitely have interest if we were able to build out portions of the Kraus on the east side, office space as well as in the basement area, and there is potential for grant funding to assist with that, and I think looking at that as a viable project is something that we certainly need to consider. This, this is our annual agreement here with the city of Oklahoma City, space at Kraus would take remodeling, a little bit of time in order to make that.
Okay, but maybe I was mistaken. I thought Oklahoma City had pretty much asked us to leave.
We have not been asked to leave. Our presence there is slowly but surely being kind of backed into a corner, and we're being reduced in usability in some aspects, particularly technology communications. My counterpart, the city of Oklahoma City, continues to expand their emergency management program in some extremely strong ways. He's done a great job of that, and the city has really supported him in great detail in that regard, and as that transpires, they continue to basically take more space and increase capabilities out there. They've made that a full-fledged backup 911 center, two separate rooms, one for call-taking, one for 911 dispatching. It's a, it's a space consideration in our regard, and we're continuing to be relegated to tighter confinement.
Well, I don't wanna deny you things that you need, obviously, to do your job, but my understanding was that we were transitioning from this to maybe the Kraus area, and this comes, although it doesn't mention it in the agenda item, this, are we still paying $25,000 a year for this location? And that will, we're committing another $25,000 for?
Yes, sir.
For the next year? Okay.
And I'm certainly open, and I would encourage taking a serious look at being able to migrate, if you will, to Kraus. I think there's some great functionality to be achieved there.
Well, I think that'd be fine, but you just need to bring your ideas to us, you know, for that.
You bet.
I'm not gonna go out there and figure out how to do that for you.
No, we certainly have plans that are very preliminary, that we've looked at various areas of that building. There's some very strong usability available there.
Okay.
What they, what they haven't done is asked us to leave. They're just pushing us out.
And not physically pushing us out, but we are, we've, in the last couple of years, we've been somewhat limited in what we're going to do.
I understand. I understand. I was over there, John.
Yeah, the concept is phenomenally strong, but the feasibility and the practicality is being reduced.
Okay. I move with, we go through this memorandum of understanding between the county and the facility on Martin Luther King, if that is.
Mm-hmm.
Oklahoma City. A second.
Can't see.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, David.
You bet. And Commissioner Vaughn, I will certainly formalize some of the planning components, and we'll continue to move forward as far as Kraus is concerned.
Good to hear. Thank you, David. Stacy, items 22 through 24?
Yes, 22 is a change order to the contract for the exterior maintenance of this building for some window sealing for existing windows, $3,750. Recommend approval.
Move the item.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 23, I'd like to strike that. We'll complete that work in the next contract.
Move the strike.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then 24 is just another progressive estimate for the roof down at the jail. It's about $5,000.
Move the item.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Planning. I don't know what everybody's been waiting for.
I get to see all this good stuff. I'm planning, Commissioner.
All right. What message you got?
Familiar, yeah, familiar with all this. No messes, no messes today.
Okay. This is the last of the review work we've been doing for a few months, planning commission, that is. We're looking at all the old special use permits back from the 60s, some of them, and this is the last of the group that we've looked at. We had open meeting sessions for the current owners of the property to speak against or not revoking these special use permits, and everybody has a chance to voice their opinion. What I have here today is a recommendation of a planning commission for each one of these resolutions. First resolution is 066-85. This resolution was approved April 1st, 1985. It was to be used as a mobile home park. That property now is currently under development for the Summerfield Mobile Home Park. They're in progress. The recommendation of the board of, I'm sorry, the recommendation of the planning commission to the board is that we take no action at all on this particular resolution.
All right. Because of the large number of citizens today, I'll ask on each individual item, are there any citizens to speak to this particular agenda item?
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'm counsel for the landowner. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Tim Johnson is also here. He is a civil engineer for this project. I would note, as it was discussed, we are underway on this. Substantial money has been spent on reliance on this special permit. Other permits have been issued in reliance on this special permit. We will have to comply with whatever the special permit requires, and we will have to require whatever ODEQ requires in terms of our sanitary sewer solutions. Again, Mr. Johnson is here, if you want any additional questions on that, but we would concur with what the planning commission did and would ask for the board to take no action.
Sarah?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Donahue, I'm counsel for North Coal Train Community Association, which is an association of the adjacent landowners to this project. As you may or may not know, North Coal Train Community Association has filed a lawsuit against the developer and the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality on the basis that they don't believe that the sanitary sewer system does comply with the original special use permit, also on the basis that they believe that as recommended, or as reflected in the agenda item here, that the use is now incompatible 30 some-plus years later with the surrounding area, and so we would ask that the Board of County Commissioners revoke that special use permit for further consideration. A no action is essentially an approval and a determination that the surrounding area has not changed, that the use is not incompatible, and that the sewage system is compliant, and so we would ask that this special use permit be revoked.
She have something further?
In terms of the litigation, that's certainly not what's at issue today, nor is the sewer system. Whatever DEQ requires in terms of sewers, what we'll have to do. So that lawsuit, which I'm not involved in, I don't know the details of, but if the board would like to hear from the civil engineer who has worked with ODEQ, he is here to address any questions. I would note that the development that he's referring to, when those folks purchased their lots and built their homes, a check of the surrounding zoning would have revealed that this site was already zoned for a mobile home park at that time, so to come in all these years later and claim that now it's incompatible, I think is probably disingenuous.
Commissioner Vaughn, this is your district. Do you have any comment?
Yes, sir, and I also serve as the commission's member on the planning commission. We've looked at, this is the project that started our review of all special use permits that are currently existing in the county, and we have found a number of them. How many total was there, Tyler or Gordon?
Special use.
Fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in there?
Twenty-two.
How many?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. A little short. There were 22 special use permits existing in the county, and we looked at every one of them to determine whether or not they were still compatible. still compatible with the use. A number of the owners were unaware that there was a special use permit applicable to their property and did not want it and asked the planning commission to recommend that it be vacated. Some were in use already and were being used for the purpose for which they were granted. Obviously, the planning commission made no recommendation to do anything else but to continue that operation. There were some that were in existence that were not in use, but you could tell from the surroundings, they were still compatible with the use that had been approved. So those were recommended not to be changed. The only one that really creates an issue for this board is this particular project, which is already under construction. And so the reason that the planning commission, I believe, recommended no action be taken was because it was already under construction. And, you know, it's, to change everything at this point, I think would be unfair to the owner that had started the project. Of course, that may be litigated and obviously will be litigated at some point. And the courts can decide, but I don't think it's this board's decision or part would be appropriate for us to change the existing PUD at this point in the process of development. So that's my personal opinion.
Any other citizens to be heard on this item? Yes, sir. If you would, please state your name for the record.
My name is Ed Kinsello, and I own a mobile home park called Willow Creek Mobile Home Park. And I don't know if this is the time to talk about that. I missed the last meeting, so I don't know what happened in terms of my zoning on my park.
This is not your project, though, right?
No, sir.
Yeah, we'll get to yours in just a minute.
Any others? If not, is there a motion?
Oh, I would, yes, I'd be happy to make a motion. I would move that we follow the planning commission's recommendation and take no action.
All in favor, Tyler, do you have something else?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank everybody for your time. Item-
This is, we were doing each one of them individually, I thought. So the next one is one twenty-two dash eighty-nine. This resolution was approved May thirtieth, nineteen eighty-nine. It is also, no, it's different. This one for telephone communication tower. And that tower does exist. It's been existing since that timeframe. And the planning commission recommends that you take no action on this resolution as well. See the tower where it's located. It does exist.
Well, I don't know if there's anybody here to speak on this.
Um, yeah. Is there any citizen to be heard on this item?
If not, I'll be happy to make a motion that we take no action.
All in favor say aye.
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 The next one is one forty-four seventy-one. This was approved October nineteen seventy-one. This is located on Southeast twenty-ninth and Harrow Road. This is the Willow Creek Mobile Home Park. That is in being, it's being operated at present state.
Now, sir, would you like to speak?
I'm sorry I missed the last meeting and I didn't know what happened in terms of the zoning on my mobile home park. So I would like to request that you let me keep it. But the, I also was kind of wondering, in order to keep things like this from happening in the future, could we get permanent zoning on it instead of just special use?
It is permanent?
Yes.
Okay.
The only reason we looked at these was because of the other mobile home park that was going in and, you know, the age of some of these special use permits that had been granted and whether or not they were being used. Since yours is being used and was developed as planned, there's no issue with your mobile home park.
Okay.
Continue to operate it as long as you like.
Okay.
And I would make a recommendation that we take no action on this item.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your time, sir.
Resolution three seventy-two dash eighty-two. This was approved December twentieth, nineteen eighty-two. This is also for a mobile home park. It is now Country Haven Mobile Home Park. It is in existence. And the planning commission recommends that no action be taken on this one as well.
Anyone here to speak on-
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. Is there any other citizen? Yes, sir. Glad. Please come forward.
My name is Pat Pointon, and we are the owners and operators of this particular mobile home park. And it is basically fully operational and continues to be just as it was built originally. And we would like to continue to keep it in that manner, just as it is.
And we certainly want you to.
Yes, absolutely.
And I, you know, I'm sorry that you had to come down, but since we're reviewing all of these, we had to review the ones that were being operated and those that weren't.
We fully understand. We're glad to come down and participate in this and do our part.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I would move that we take no action.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution three twenty dash eighty-two. This was approved November first, nineteen eighty-two. This is a CNC mobile home park. It is in existence. And the planning commission recommends you take no action on this one as well.
Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move that we take no action.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution eighty-two dash seventy-four, approved September ninth, nineteen seventy-four. This particular one was a mobile home park and included a retirement center and academy. This is being operated today as the Oklahoma Conference Corporation of Seven Day Adventist Campgrounds. And they're in operation today. Planning commission recommends that no action be taken.
Anyone here to speak on this item? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we take no action.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution sixty-eight dash eighty-three, approved March twenty-first, nineteen eighty-three. This is an area that was the, used as a natural gas conditioning station. That's been in existence since that timeframe. And the owner of that property has submitted a letter requesting that we take no action. They've been in business for years and they'd like to remain there. So they'd like to have this one stay in place. Planning commission recommends that you take no action.
Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we take no action on item G.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Resolution ninety-seven seventy is approved April twentieth, nineteen seventy. This was for a fifty-acre mobile home park. It is currently in use as Timberland Mobile Home Park. It exists out on Southeast twenty-ninth and Henney Road. The company owners have spoke with me on several occasions and also have submitted a letter that the board take no action on this resolution. They plan to continue to operate. And the planning commission recommends you take no action.
Anyone here to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Hi. Eddie Morgan, one-six-one-two, Meadow Run Drive. I am the representative of Front Property Management Company, Yes Communities. We purchased it about three years ago from ARC, and we are going to continue to operate it as a mobile home park with no additional changes.
Thank you for coming, sir. As you can see, the train's headed your direction, so-
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take no action.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was it. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
How'd that would be today? And normally, we don't have any, anything from the planning commission. What's up?
The planning commission's been busy.
I can see that. I love it. Yeah, but, you know, it's just, they just don't send everybody back to town.
Okay. Thanks for everybody's participation on that. Item twenty-six is approval. Action requested from the sheriff's office for the city of Oklahoma City, whereas the Department of Justice Assistance Grants, and this is with the city waiving ten percent of their funds for administering the grant. Do you want to speak to this, John? It's pretty detailed here on the agenda item, but these are for the JAG funds.
Yes, the other thing I'd like to point out on this, this is a grant we've had for many, many years. Our percentage of that grant's typically been around seventeen, eighteen percent. This year, we reapproached Oklahoma City and requested some additional funding through this grant, which we were successful in. So this year, we're receiving around thirty-five percent of the total amount, which is almost double what we were receiving in the past. And the vast majority of this, if not all of it, will be going towards upgrades and maintenance of the county radio system for the sheriff's office.
Very good.
All in favor say aye.
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 Social Services has items that are pertaining to our community support grants.
Mr. Chairman, since they are, looks like one-hundred percent renewal agreement, is it possible that we could approve all of them at one time?
Sure.
Okay. I move we approve items twenty-seven through, oh, what's that number?
Forty.
Forty. For the social services.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
And I think for the record, we read in that that's for Regional Food Bank, RSCP of Central Oklahoma, Community Action Agency, Upward Transitions, Hope Center of Edmunds, CAS of Oklahoma County, Central Oklahoma Transportation Parking Authority, also known as COPDA, Eastern Oklahoma County Technology Center, Hope Center of Edmunds, Sunbeam Family Services, Citizens Caring for Children Resource Center, Daily Living Center, Harris Senior, Citizens Incorporated, Metropolitan Better Living Center. And there's been a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve our claims?
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think back in the surplus items, Amber, she's gone, is she? She had, do you know what this is about, Jane, where she said?
Okay, so it's just a telephone.
So I need to ask the board to revisit. This was my mistake for not pointing it out. It's in the surplus items under the consent docket, so let's get to that item.
Yeah, book page, there's lots of them.
It's number thirteen.
Page two?
Twelve of the agenda.
Oh, agenda item thirteen on page two, yeah.
On page twelve.
In page twelve, now's where you're looking at the direction.
It's talking about a number of joysticks and mobile computer terminal cabinets.
Page twelve of mine is the-
Number three. I mean, thirteen, second page.
Maybe. See, mine's on, give the pages to you.
It's all these items here. I don't know why it's not on yours.
See, I have all these records.
See?
Yeah. See, it's page ten of mine. Thank you. Joysticks. Page nine, it's ten. Okay.
Okay, well, let's do it this way. It's items B-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-sixty through B-two-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-seventy.
Gotcha.
Listed there on the agenda and the dates read twenty-seventeen. In actuality, they should be December thirty-first of two thousand seven. So there was a scribbler's error there on those items. And I could submit this to the clerk for verification. Is there a motion to reopen this item for this consideration?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is for thirteen of the consent docket. Now, is there a motion to change those dates for the record from December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, to its actual date of December thirty-first, two thousand seven?
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you for that housekeeping item. Now, item forty-two, our blanket. Is there any changes? No change to the blanket?
Move the blanket.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other citizens here today to be, see, okay, Mr. Hooton?
Thank you, commissioners. We'd like to acknowledge Teresa Wooliver. Today is her forty-first year as of today being with the Oklahoma County Clerk's Office. So we appreciate her service.
Thank you guys very much. I've enjoyed working here and I still love it.
Yes, it started as a child.
I did, very much.
Well, she always had a smile on her face and I appreciate that. Thank you.
That was back when they could hire people before they were twenty-one, obviously.
Wow.
Congratulations.
That's great.
Congratulations. Thanks for your service. All right. Any other citizens to be heard? If not, Commissioner Combs, District One.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, most of the stuff that I comment on are just real close stuff. When I went out to Moore High School last night for a football game, I heard your son is playing football. He's playing both lineman and defensive something. And it was a really joyful experience, except I fell down and I've got all the skin straight off my elbow, my knees, and my leg. And a wonderful young man. I don't know how in the world he did it, but he helped me get up. I'm pretty heavy. And he was just awesome. Got me out. His name is Sam. Don't know his last name, but I really do appreciate it. And if you ever hear about Sam and him helping me, you tell him I still thank him and I love him and I hug his neck. Thank you.
I can't stop that.
You can't stop that.
All right. Any new business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move the aye.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.